Councilmember Coe.
Here.
Here.
Pardon?
Here.
Yes.
Temple.
Here.
Mayor, if you're speaking, I can't hear you. We still can't hear you.
I will speak louder.
That's better. Sorry to interrupt. You can't hear your game.
Let's give this one a try. I can hear myself with that one.
Yes, thank you.
One action item this evening to discuss and consider three concept designs for the alignment of Merle Hay Road and Johnson Drive Intersection Reconstruction Project. And Matt, do we start with you? Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. The city has contracted with FOTH to design improvements at the Merle Hay and Johnston Drive intersection. Staff of the design team have met a few times with the working committee on the intersection. During these meetings, all options were to be looked at and reviewed. At our last council meeting, we briefly introduced three design concepts about the project to the council. This evening, we'll introduce those three concepts and take a deeper dive into each one of those concepts. We'll discuss the constraints as well as the concerns that each design includes, which can be anything from the property impacts to the removal of a beech tree located in the right-of-way at Herd Gardens. We've concluded our first round of meetings with the affected property owners and are taking into consideration their design requests, primarily focusing on access points as well as the functional design of the intersection to help improve traffic flow at that intersection. Traffic study performed using data from a previous study at this intersection, which we'll review in depth a little bit later in the program. The study does take into account future growth using the Merle Hay Gateway Concept and Development Plan. Currently, the intersection does have challenges on the east leg. This is due to large construction vehicles moving westbound. I had unique challenges. Concept one is balancing the property impacts and impacts and expanding the intersection to the north and removing the beech tree that resides on the Herd Gardens within the right-of-way. In concept two, we took a look and we shifted that additional lane to the south, which increases those property impacts to the southeast and the southwest corner and could increase the cost of the project by roughly about $170,000 for the need of a retaining wall and some other improvements. In concept three, we took a minimal approach and looked at just adding the additional road to the west into the new development that would sit behind the Sonic and the Jimmy John's and Bandit Burrito site. This evening, we will take that deeper dive into each of these concepts. Patrick Keeter with FOTH is going to run through each of those concepts. Staff tonight is looking to receive feedback and direction to move forward with a design concept. We'll be happy to answer any questions about the concepts along the way. With that, I will go ahead and turn it over to Patrick.
Thank you, Matt. Can everybody hear me okay?
We can hear you.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and share my screen here. And please let me know when you can see that.
We can see it.
Okay. Okay, Mayor and members of the council. Last week, we kind of briefly gave a very high overview of the information Matt just shared with you. And so we'll go ahead and go through that a little bit slower tonight. I think the first thing, the best thing to do is really kind of start with a condensed summary of the overall traffic study that was completed last November. And so the memo that you see here before summarizes the overall traffic study that was done. And it really, what the traffic study took into account was really three main primary focus points. The first one being the proposed Ignite site itself and the trips and the traffic that would be generated from that site. The second component was the Merle Hay Road Gateway redevelopment concept that's been out there. We used the concept that was pulled together there to assign trips based on the proposed land uses in that concept. And we also applied that to the roadway network to determine, you know, what component of that would, how that would impact the corridors in the vicinity of that development. And the last component of that is just the overall general background traffic growth for the area. And so we kind of, we blended all three of those together to really get the results that we need to analyze the intersection of Johnston Drive and Merle Hay Road. You can see on the right here, the traffic volumes here. And this is the intersection of Johnson Drive and Merle Hay Road. The north-south road here is Merle Hay. The east-west road is Johnston Drive. And primarily, what I would like to focus on tonight is really just talk about the overall level of service. And for a quick review, level of service is just like the report cards back when I went to grade school and high school. Letter A through F, A being a better level of service compared to a level F where there's essentially gridlock in the corridor and nobody's moving. So we'll talk a little bit about level of service. We'll talk about the queue lengths that develop out there, how far cars back up at a signal. And we'll talk about the direction, the directional movements. So that would be like a westbound, a southbound movement or the through movement on Merle Hay Road. So we'll talk about an intersection. We'll talk about level of service in each one of those directions. But then we rate the overall intersection as a whole also as a level of service. So we'll touch briefly upon that also. Level of service equates to essentially amount of seconds in delay for any given movement. And so we'll just touch briefly on that also. So if you can see here in the traffic volumes, and I'm just going to really kind of focus on that westbound to southbound movement. So it's the upper right-hand corner of the two boxes here. And we have our 2021 traffic, which was our base data that we use. And then we also grew that into 2046 traffic. And so if you look here in the westbound to southbound direction in 2021, we have 211 vehicles. In 2046, that grows to 331. If you can see here, the through movement in the westbound would essentially be westbound on Johnston Drive that would cross Merle Hay Road and be near Sonic and Bandit Burrito. Jimmy John's right there. We don't, we're not projecting much growth in that movement between the two years there. If you can see the growth in the westbound to northbound movement, that right turn moment does grow, grow a little bit there. So essentially what we did then is we go through and look at the corridor itself based on these projected traffic volumes. And the table below here really kind of summarizes the overall, and I'll try to blow that up so hopefully you can see it a little better. Summarizes the overall movements. And I was focusing above on the westbound movement. And the reason why is, is we're starting to see, the highlighted boxes are areas that, the light orange here are areas that we need to start paying attention to so that in the future, that we're not creating a bigger issue that we're not solving today with the design. This table is really broken out in the 2021 and 2046. And then across the top here, you have the northbound, southbound movements on Merle Hay Road. You have the eastbound, westbound movements here on Johnston Drive and the extension of Johnston Drive to the west. I'm over on the far right here. This is the intersection, overall intersection level of service. So that kind of takes in all movements. We assign a letter grade to that. So the first alternative in 2021 and 2046 that we looked at was a single westbound left. That's currently how it functions out there today. I'm sure everybody recalls that we have one direction, westbound. We, through right, we have a westbound left turn, dedicated left turn lane that goes southbound on Merle Hay Road. And then we have one eastbound receiving lane on that side of the intersection. So if you look, here's where we're starting to crop up a little bit on our delay in the intersection with that single leftbound left or single westbound left. And that level of service equates, that seconds of delay equates to about a level of service E. So typically in the Des Moines area, we look at our side streets and try to design them to, in the future, to a level of service D. And so what we started looking at then was looking at some alternatives here. How to solve this.
Patrick, just to make sure, I want to confirm. So you designed a level of service D as in dog? Is that right?
Correct, yes.
Thank you.
Yep. So by adding the dual westbound left, we can improve that movement to a level of service D. Now, this is, this is the 2021 traffic. So when we grow that traffic, you can kind of see, we're starting to get some more boxes highlighted over here. And so that's where we start in with our current design where we're at today. So we're not coming back in the near future to add more capacity. We try to solve that when with our current design that we have today. So by adding the dual left here across the bottom in 2046, we can reduce that left turn delay that's out there. Take that from a level of service E and increase that to a level of service D. So that kind of hits our targets from a design perspective. And so that's the reason why the current design was proposed as a dual left. Now, we may ask ourselves, okay, what happens if we don't install that dual left? Well, we go from a level of service D, we fall back to a level of service E. We increase our delay there, you know, just about 19 seconds. Or, excuse me, 21 seconds. But what you start seeing happening here is we start having issues on Merle Hay Road in the through movements on Merle Hay Road. And so that throws up a red flag that said, okay, again, how can we solve that? And if you see, when we add the second left turn lane westbound, we can go ahead and essentially maintain a fairly similar level of service of what's out there today. And because what happens is, is we can allow, instead of servicing Johnston Drive with more time from the signal operation, we can dedicate more time back to Merle Hay Road. And what that does is that that obviously increases the level of service on Merle Hay Road. And so it's kind of a balancing act. Now, one thing I need to point out here is you may ask, why, when we add a dual left, is the westbound combination through right turn lane, why does that decrease? And the reason why is, if we go back up to our traffic numbers here. See here. Is you can see that the through movement of 36 and 34 stays relatively the same from year to year. But we do have, we do expect more westbound and northbound right turn movements. And what's happening is, in our analysis here, is because we're taking more time to service Merle Hay Road with the addition of the second left turn lane here, there's not as much time to service that westbound through right movement. So that, that, that movement actually decreases. But what happens is, it's a balancing act. And so with a single left, we'd be a level of service E, but yet we're able to maintain that level of service D overall, even though that one movement is getting hit a little more than what we would like to see. So it's kind of an overall balancing movement. Now, we've talked internally here quite a bit about, should we be adding a right turn lane? Because that's what would solve this. And because the through limit count is so low, we don't necessarily believe, or the analysis being that with so few vehicles, you're going to get a pretty good level of service. And the only exception is going to come as one that through movement car pulls up and is the first couple of cars at the intersection. It's not going to allow the right turn movements. So we're trying to, we're trying to balance it a little bit. And the reason why is because we just don't have that many westbound through movements. So we think it's going to actually function at a higher level of service based on our past experience.
Patrick, can I ask a quick question? So these charts that you are showing us are based on traffic counts and your traffic design at peak hours, correct? This is how traffic engineers approach things. They approach it at the peak hour. I just want people to understand that the, you know, there are other times of the day when these intersections and these lanes would have a much better grade, correct?
Yes, yes, yep. Typically, to give a little background, more background on that, Councilwoman Martin, is we do, we do look at the AM peak period and the PM peak period. And we try to put our design around that. So at off-peak times throughout the day, you will have a higher level of service at this intersection.
So Patrick, a quick question up here. So on a peak time, the traffic lights, how long does the Merle Hay Road light stay, you know, as opposed to the northwest Johnson Drive?
Yeah, I'd have to get back into the timings. I know this intersection is taken out of coordination. And so what we do is, we look at our time-space diagrams and we try to get all the signals up and down Merle Hay Road to be coordinated. Now, what complicates this a little bit is down at the interstate, there's a project going on right now to be able to retime the interstate and everything south on Merle Hay Road. And that system's being maintained and function, the operations is being handled by the city of Des Moines there. So as we come up through here, it's on the city of Johnson system. So there's, I believe there's some upgrades that are going to be made so that hopefully that, that works better between the two main intersections there. Traditionally, we look at 120-second cycle. So that means every two minutes is a complete cycle. So that means Merle Hay Road would be serviced as well as Johnston Drive would be serviced. And then it's getting divvied out, you know, between through movements, left turn movements and overlap where you got left and right turn movements where we have right turn lanes at the intersection.
So at this time, is that 120-second cycle? Is hard, hard, hard set that if there's no change in that 120-second rest the whole day? Based on traffic or is that same 120-second the whole day?
I would need to confirm with our traffic engineers if we would maintain that 120-second cycle. The issue becomes if we break that 120-second cycle, then the rest of the corridor can get choppy. So I believe we can take it down. And I know we do this on a couple of intersections, I believe, on, during off-peak hours on 86th Street so that the signal is a little bit snappier. But I believe those are sometimes, I think we may take them down to a 60-second cycle potentially there. But Suresh, I would need to ask our traffic engineers more about that.
Okay, yeah, well, I need to know one more thing about this as well. So 120-second, second cycle means there's no traffic sensor or anything on that traffic lights, right? It's just a hard go. It's just no traffic sensors there.
If there's no traffic on there, and we can, and again, I don't know the exact timings at this intersection. I do know we take it out of coordination. When it runs free, that means as soon as you get a call on that side street, which would be Johnston Drive, and our main line, main line is what we refer to as Merle Hay Road. But when the signal's running free, anybody, anytime that comes, a car comes up and trips that from the side street, it'll happen immediately. But I don't, I don't believe that we have that set up here. But I need, I need to confirm.
Okay, I'll leave. I mean, I need that answer, that thing that'll help us more.
I jot down those two notes and we'll get more information back to you.
Patrick, I have a question. And I don't know if this is the time to ask it or even if this is the information that we need to use as kind of the background for the question. But, you know, as I look at these, these numbers that you have in front of us and the, and the the level of service, what I wonder about is, you know, if the level of service gets worse over time because we haven't designed it correctly. You know, this is an area that, you know, we really have spent a lot of time thinking about how we want it to redevelop. And, you know, we, you know, we we have this vision of a lot of things going on in this, in this area, which will mean we also want a lot of pedestrian traffic there, moving back and forth across Merle Hay, whether it's people walking or bicycling or, or otherwise. So what I'm wondering is, you know, as, as the level of service, where now we're sitting in the dark, as the level of service degrades, how does that all impact the pedestrian traffic in the area?
On the pedestrian side, as soon as they press the pedestrian push button, that may end up throwing the corridor out of coordination for a while. And it will take a couple of cycles to catch that backup and intersection, to catch an intersection backup to get it back in coordination. So with the pedestrians, you know, they'll get their walk time to get across the intersection. And when they're there, and that will take time away from the vehicle in that situation. So as you would have more pedestrians in the corridor and being more active, to me, the importance of making sure that we have the right number of lanes out there becomes pretty important because as you start pushing that button, you siphon the time away from the vehicle traffic. So it's a balanced job. And and I think that's what, I think that's what we've done here with, with our initial alternative that we laid out was really try to take a balanced approach.
Yeah. Well, you know, I'm concerned about the safety of the people in the vehicles and not having people running red lights or, you know, because they're having to wait too long or doing other, you know, things that we don't want them to be doing because they become impatient. But more, I'm more concerned about the pedestrians and how the vehicle traffic might create a dangerous situation for them. So anyway, I, if you can give that even some more thought, I'd appreciate it.
The other challenge, and I know we've spoken about this in our committee meetings a little bit, is, you know, this being the first intersection north or south of an interstate, there's just traditionally a lot of, you know, turning movements and truck movements and stuff here. And Matt mentioned it a little bit in his opening remarks. You know, just with the industrial area to the east here of all the delivery trucks and all the product coming back out of that area, of those being larger trucks also, you know, they take a little more time to be able to maneuver the intersection. So that's also some delay that's in there. Going back down to the interstate timings, you know, they will always favor the interstate movement so that we're not backing traffic up out into the through lanes. So that's at a sacrifice a little bit in coordination with, with the Merle Hay Road corridor itself. So so it just, you know, it's probably one of the more challenging locations just to get a good coordination plan and keep traffic flowing and, and obviously pedestrians moving across the intersection.
Both you, Patrick, both you and Matt mentioned the working group or committee or, not sure what its official name was, but is that just, is that just a council subcommittee or are there members of the public on that? Or what's that committee comprised of?
The committee was comprised of the mayor, Tom Councilman Coe, and Councilwoman Martin.
And then one other question on your chart, Patrick. The, I guess the westbound movement from Johnston Drive across Merle Hay only goes up, I think it went from what, 34 to 36 or something like that, a very small amount?
Yes, right here.
With, with Ignite development over there, I guess I don't get why that wouldn't be increased by more than that. I know this is peak time we're talking about, but what you're saying basically is that no one would be coming into Ignite from Beaver Avenue and then coming westbound on Johnston Drive. And everybody into Ignite would be coming either north or south on Merle Hay. And am I understanding that correctly? And is there a reason why that's the assumption?
The, John, I'm like 99% confident the 2021 numbers take in the Ignite site in our base traffic. And so the growth you're seeing is from that other, those other uses there.
Okay, got it. That makes sense, okay.
We try to look at an opening day setup. And then we kind of phase the traffic, the additional growth traffic in over time, so. Any other questions on the traffic component of this? As soon as we wrap this up, then I think probably best just to kind of dive in and help explain the differences between the alternatives we have laid out.
Not hearing any, Patrick.
Okay. Okay, I'll go ahead then and jump into kind of the overall concepts here. And if you're unable to see at any time, just, just please stop me and I can zoom in on the areas and talk in a little more detail. So the first alternative that we laid out here is shown right here. And what we tried to do with this alternative is to go ahead and really balance the impacts on the west side of Merle Hay Road on Johnston Drive between the Sonic and Bandit Burrito. And so what we looked at here is we have to reconfigure the parking lots on both of those restaurants. And we have to shift the parking, as you can see here, to the backside of both of those restaurants. We've had an initial round of property owner meetings. Both businesses have been receptive. They're very supportive of the project. And they, I think they understand the impacts that this project could have on their business with the Ignite site. So they've been really good to work with so far. And so when I say we balance the impacts, if you see here, this orange line right here on Sonic, that sits back about 21 foot from our proposed back of curb. And then likewise down here on Bandit Burrito and Jimmy John's, we have about a 20-foot offset between the back of curbs from the street to, to the, the parking lot, that how we'd have to reconfigure it. And it's just a driving lane over here on this side. So we tried to balance that. We tried to squeeze a sidewalk in. We need to get utilities in here yet. So the corridor is getting pretty condensed. And some of that, that other infrastructure that I just referenced will likely end up going immediately behind the back of curb with no offset. Or we may end up having to squeeze some of it underneath the pavement. That's kind of the next step that we'll start taking and finding homes for all that, that infrastructure. Now with this, there's some challenges. Now with this, um, there, there's some challenges, is how do we go from a dedicated right turn lane out? To one through lane out to only a single left with one through lane coming back in. And one thing that we always, uh, have to do with our designs is have balance from one side of the intersection to the other side of the intersection. And in a perfect world, we get our, we get all of our lanes to line up, so you just drive straight through the intersection and you don't have to taper through the intersection. Since we have an unbalanced situation in this where we're adding our second left turn lane. And we, to do that, we push the through movement and right movement to the north. Approximately twelve to thirteen feet, I believe. So what this does is this, this sets up a small transition in the intersection. And in the, in the, uh, westbound through lane, so from this lane, when we come through the intersection. You have to transition over about just over five feet to get into this lane right here. And so that through movement, you're going to kind of taper, taper through the intersection. Um, in, in the eastbound movement, you're transitioning over, um, actually just under seven feet, it's six foot ten roughly. And we have some, we have a little bit wider lanes over here, so some of this kind of depends on where you measure, if you measure from the edge of the lane or from the center of the lane. What we've shown you here tonight is, is from the center of lane to center of lane. So we have a, a essentially a five foot two shift up here and a six foot ten shift down here. Uh, what that does is that does impact the, the beech tree here at this location. And that tree sits currently about six foot behind the, the existing back of curb out there. As part of this. Will, will be, end up, will end up impacting about two to three parking stalls on this property, on Clark property here on the southeast side of the intersection. Um, if you look at the aerial or drive by their day, you can see the off tracking from the larger trucks that are out here. And they're off tracking up over top of the curb, up over, uh, top of this, the pedestrian ramp there. And, uh, taking their product to the east there. So as part of that, we would go ahead and widen that return out a little bit so that those trucks stay within the roadway. And not up on, uh, behind the back of curb. Uh, what this does is basically maintains, you know, here to the east. A twenty-five foot offset from the back of curb, essentially to the back of curb of the parking lot here. Um, I can tell you, um, from an ideal situation, you know. We try to avoid shifts through intersections at all costs. Um, just because the, the concern is, um, you could run people into the wrong side of an intersection. And, and be a little problematic. Um, but again, we're trying to balance, uh, with the constraints with the businesses out here. And, and how we, we, we set the intersection up. So that's the best we can do with this alternative. Now, we, we could help this a little bit more in the, in the, the eastbound movement. But we would have to continue to push to the north, uh, to be able to help that. But if we push too far to the north, then we start impacting that westbound movement. So. So it's a give and take and, and, and really how we laid this all out really goes back to the west side of the intersection. And really trying to figure out a way to be able to balance the impacts to both, uh, the Jimmy John's and Bandit Burrito on the south. And the Sonic on the north. Are there any questions on that alternative?
Wasn't there something like a retaining wall or something here?
Uh, with our initial design, um, there's no retaining wall. Um, the retaining wall we'll talk about in the second alternative, which sits over here just out in front of the gun club. Um, if you can see here, we're proposing to reroute the driveway that sits right here. Um, to, to push it over here so that we can try to maintain a full access point, um, into the southeast corner. Um, from an overall access standpoint, this is the parcel that is the most challenging to solve. And so why this isn't ideal, we've tried to push it over here as far as we can. Um, this alternative may have a slight retaining wall here. We can get an acceptable slope here between the two parking lots. And, or from this parking lot up to here. But if the property owner wants us to flatten it a little bit, make that a little more easier to maintain, um, we may have a small. Uh, two foot, maybe three foot tall retaining wall. Um, it definitely would not be as big as when we shove everything to the south in alternative two. To be able to keep the, the shoulder, the slope, a safe slope, because that would come out in here to the parking lot, so. Um, we haven't shown this alternative to the property owners yet. Um, the first time we met with them. Um, their main concern was maintaining full access out onto Johnston Drive. Um, from a traffic perspective, you know, our, our queues are backing up, I think, I believe today, some, sometimes back into this area. I think you hear times that it can get all the way back into this intersection here. Um, but by adding the dual S, what we're trying to do is, is compress that, that queue length. And, and keep it as tight to the intersection as possible. Um, it may be a little problematic during the peak hours, getting in and out of this driveway to head both directions.
Patrick?
Yes.
On this option one, will you still have for that, where I see that number six, I know this is not related to the actual number six, but. There looks like a right in, right out. Will that be maintained or will that go away?
That driveway there, um, we prefer that driveway to go away since we're providing a full access over here.
Okay, so the only access will be the one that's on the, on the far end.
Yep, on the far end. Um, so taking a step back, um, I have to say that all the property owners have been really, really good to work with. Um, the most challenging thing we have to deal with is sometimes we can't do the best thing for an individual parcel like right here. And so we've really worked with them and during our initial meetings, everybody that has been really open to kind of help their neighbor out as best they can. Um, and in this situation here, um, we've talked to, I believe it's the vet clinic and the, um, medical clinic. Um, our supplies right here. And what we would do, because right here, like this driveway access location here, we'll go to our right in, right out only. Um, right now you can kind of see like right here, this little green area. You can kind of, there's side by side left turn lanes currently on Merle Hay Road. And what that does is that allows us to get a, a small, a left turn into there. But with reconfiguring Merle Hay Road, um, to add a dedicated right, what we're going to do is, is. Is take away that side by side left, which is a little unusual. You don't see a lot of those around the country. Um, and repurpose this northbound outside lane. As a dedicated right turn lane, and we have some transitions north and south to be able to handle that. But what these businesses, through our initial discussions, um, we can go ahead and get a left turner. Into here and they can go ahead and maneuver back up to the businesses in this corner. So if you think about somebody southbound, they actually have two choices. They could make a left at the signal, come in the driveway over here, or come down here and make a, a left in and come up in here. And then obviously, if you want to go southbound out of here, you come down to this driveway and come out and go south there. Or the better bet is probably coming out here north, because this, this is going to be a lot less travel, you're only crossing one lane of travel. And come in here at the intersection, head out south there. And obviously go back north, you'd come out this driveway and head back north, so. So again, I, I, I commend the property owners based on our initial meetings. They, they all seem to want to be willing to work with each other. On, on this side of the street.
Yes, may, um, go back up a little bit. So in this, in this view, number one, you say that beech tree will be taken out?
Yes, with alternative one here, um, the current beech tree sits about, um, six foot north of the existing curb line. So if you see right here, um, this yellow line kind of indicates where we'll saw cut the existing curb off. And the orange line right here is our proposed widening that adds that additional through right, which allows us to get the second left turn lane. To go southbound. This, uh, halo here, right here, that, that's the tree that was surveyed in.
Okay, all right, let's look at the other, other alternative and then we'll come back to that, bud.
Patrick?
Yes.
On that option one, so coming out of the new development. That center lane, could it also be going east and then south? Like if there's heavy traffic after event ended, could we make that a two, two lanes to go south?
Um, so, uh, what we're gonna, that would require us to run a split phase. On that, yeah, we would like to try, and a split phase is where you run, say, the west side of the intersection. And then you run the east side of the intersection. You don't run them concurrently. And with this dedicated, um, right turn lane here. Um, we can do what we refer to as a left turn, or a right turn on a left turn overlap. So we can go ahead and run left turns on Merle Hay Road, north and southbound. And we can have a green arrow in that dedicated right turn lane to run at the same time. Um, if we get into that split phase, our level of service is going to deteriorate very quickly, I think. Um, so we would like to try to avoid that if possible. I know long term. Uh, they definitely want the, the, the connection made down here to the south. And to get that to work with this overall development. So if you look, this blue line represents kind of the center line. Of what we would see for roadway concept. And we have that coming out right here now, kind of, um, where it is. Come, the, that driveway is on the aqua property there right now. Um, that probably has a little flexibility to maybe move a little more south. Uh, maybe not so much north because these curves are, are really the minimum horizontal curves we would want to see for roadway at this classification. So I, I would really recommend against going to split phase because it's really gonna, gonna impact our north-south movement on Merle Hay Road. Thanks. So we'll jump over to alternative two then. And alternative two was really developed. Um, after we heard the concern of trying to figure out a way to save the beech tree, which is labeled here by number one. And in this situation, what happens then is starting on the west side of the roadway here. The roadway just kind of picks up and it slides about ten feet to the south. Or I should say about eight feet to the south. So instead of having like twenty and twenty-one feet. We have about thirty feet up here to the north and only twelve feet here to the south. So what that does is it provides a little bit more of an impact here. Onto the, to the Jimmy John's and Bandit Brito. And what we're showing here. I don't think we would really want to build with this minimum of distance behind the back of curb. And between the, but between the roadway and the parking lot, there, there's just not a lot of room to store, store snow there. And, and also get other utilities in through there. Um, what this alternative does do though. Is it, it, it lines up very well from a, from a westbound perspective. I, I believe there's only about a half a foot offset here. So you can kind of see that goes straight through. But the problem we see here is, you know, we, we almost have an eleven and a half foot, it's eleven foot four inches. A shift from that through movement here to the southbound or to the, to the east side. From the west side to the east side of the intersection, we have about eleven foot, four inch shift through there. If you think about that, what that does is pretty soon you're starting to point this through movement into one of these dedicated left turn lanes. And so that becomes very problematic, um, and even more so than what, what's in the first alternative. And so in order to combat that, the only thing we could do then is, is provide a, a larger median in here. But what that does then to get this to align is we would start encroaching the back of curb almost right up to the edge of this, this. Exit aisle coming out of this, the business here. And our concern with this alternative is really. Is, is how the negotiations would go with this property owner and the demands that they may come back and put on the city, uh, for that parcel. Uh, with that, we, we get into a little bit more of an impact here on the southeast quadrant. Um, primarily with, um, I think we, we double the, the parking impacts we go to from about. Uh, what is it, uh, two to three impacts with alternative one of stalls being impacted here. And we're going to impact between six and seven, uh, with this, this alternative here. Uh, as part of this alternative then, um, since we're widening to the south. Um, this is where we get into the retaining wall that was brought up earlier. Um, the cost that retaining walls, about sixty to seventy thousand dollars to do that. Um, the, the, the overall cost increase from alternative one to alternative two is about, I'll say a hundred and fifty to a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Just, just rounding it. Um, and it has to do with there, there's a little more payment removal and some additional payment. Uh, as we take and start stretching out our tapers to be able to handle it here going to the east. And what this does do is it saves the beech tree, that north curb line does not change. And we would bend the sidewalk or trail out around that, that, that area and try to do our best to be able to weave it through there. Um, but the offset of the intersection, um, is, is more than what, um. We would like to see from a design perspective.
So Patrick, help me understand this offset going from west to east, you said eleven feet. Do you have any kind of a statistics to say that, that eleven feet is? Uh, you know, risky, what's a two feet thing?
Uh, so what's the level of risk of, I think maybe the question you're asking is what's the level of risk, uh, that we would send somebody down, down the wrong direction there? I can tell you, um, gee, someone date myself here now. Twenty-six, twenty-seven years in the business. I've never done an offset intersection with the exception of one case. Over at highway sixty or highway twenty-eight, First Street, Sixty-third Street or Des Moines, West Des Moines, Iowa DOT. At Raccoon River, uh, not, not Raccoon River Drive, Railroad Avenue. And we only did about a six inch offset from one side of the intersection to the other side of the intersection. What we would need to do, um, is really, you know, keep the paint lines going across here. You'll see some skip dashes going all the way through the intersection. To make sure that we give vehicles that, that hard line to be able to work off as they navigate through the intersection. Um, you know, is there anything, everything that's out there says we need to avoid it as much as possible? Um, and, and it just, it, it starts to become problematic.
Understand, I understand your concern. I, I really get that. What I'm trying, trying to understand. I mean, this is probably not the only thing, not the only place this has been solved, probably other places in the country might have had this kind of situation and that it's. There's something about it. I'm just trying to get to know if there's some statistics on this. Of how this will impact. One of the kinds that I have is that the eleven feet in the daylight. We can see the traffic well enough and think like, in the nighttime, when it is raining, it's really hard to see on the curb, wherever it's painted, anything on the road. Can't just see, there's a lot more going on, dark rain. So I'm trying to get those numbers to see if this is a viable option or not.
Yeah, I really, you know, I, I think if we, if we would have to, um. Come up with something is, is a, is a half a lane or less, so, so about six foot or less is, is really what we would, we'd try to limit it to. Um, because they're, they're looking across at a, at a median, uh, on the other side of the road, so.
The other thing that we need to keep in mind is if the Ignite facility is as successful as we hope it will be. A lot of the people that will be coming out of there from the, from the west going east are not going to be very familiar with this intersection. Those of us that live here, uh, that, that, you know, go down those roads a lot will be, will become, you know, very, very comfortable and very. Familiar with that intersection, but a lot of visitors to the Ignite facility will not be.
Yes, yes, that is very true. I started trying to get the risk factors here, trying to understand what is the risk and all those different things. But that's where I think I tried to. But that's what I think I tried to get, thanks, man.
I, I think the bigger concern with this alternative is, is really, I think it's going to be the reaction from this property owner. And is this going to be too big of an impact for them? I mean, uh, when we start getting down to this, the small distance in here, um, a twelve foot or less. Um, that becomes, that, that becomes pretty tight. And so if we have to take and shift, you know, more to the south to provide a bigger buffer in there for their snow storage, for our snow storage. And any sort of utilities that we need to squeeze in there, plus a parking lot late that, or two that may have to go along that side of the building. Um, I, I've been a little nervous what they're going to come back and ask for. Any other questions on this alternative before we move to the, the do nothing alternative and leave that like the way it is? So we'll move on to the last alternative then. And this was really just going ahead and, and leaving the roadway the way it is over here. Of not, uh, touching that and, and what that does. Is that provides us about an eight foot shift at this location from in the west, eastbound direction. So going from the west side of the intersection to the east side, we have about an eight foot shift to the south. And then going in the eastbound direction. Um, hang on, I may have those numbers backwards here. Uh, westbound, yeah, westbound is a, uh, six, about a six and a half foot shift to the north, uh, going through the intersection. So again, to, 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 to secure that, we could pull this down to the south on the west side. But then what that does is that starts impacting the business down here, uh, more so on the south than on the north.
And this will suddenly impact the traffic turning. Uh, east to south, east to south, right?
Can, can you repeat that question? I didn't catch that, sorry.
Sorry, I was trying to say, if you keep the original design as is now, it'll impact the traffic turning left from the eastbound traffic, right?
Yeah, let's, uh, let's pull the, we can pull the, um. Let's go look at those numbers here. So if we look in that westbound direction, what if we, if we have a single left? Our queues will be about three hundred and fifty-eight or three hundred and sixty feet. And with the dual movement, they go to like two hundred and fifty-five feet. So we add about another hundred foot of queue, so it'd be about another five vehicles stacked up in that direction. Um, and then we would also be impacting that through movement on Merle Hay Road. Um, because we're going to need more time to be able to service the, the Johnston Drive leg of the intersection.
Right, and in this chart that you're showing, there's this, uh, column P hatch and RT, what do those mean?
Uh, uh, LT is the left turn, TH is the through movement, RT is the right turn movement. And then when you get over here, you can kind of see the columns combined, so that's a through right. So, so what happens is, you know, on, on Merle Hay Road, you know, you get those, you start getting those increases up here. Um, higher.
Yes, I understand that.
Patrick, if you wouldn't mind a question, now that you've gone through the three options.
Yep.
And option two, you have a setback. Uh, uh, number four, and you're saying that's a twelve foot buffer from the, no, that was that number six. No, it's number four. Less than a twelve foot buffer from the roadway. But when you go into option three, you take it back to a twenty foot buffer.
Yep.
Um, uh, both on the, uh. Jimmy John's side and on the, uh, I can't remember, Sonic side. But if you were to take that number four where you say it's twenty foot buffer and, and narrowed it down to twelve, like you had in option two. Would you basically get your alignment cor- um, east and west lanes corrected?
Yes, it would, it would, it would better align those.
So, so the problem would be the impacts on the Jimmy John in terms of their more limited buffer. And where are you going to put utilities, et cetera, but the traffic links themselves would work out.
Yes, yes, correct.
And Patrick, I just, going back to your traffic study. Um, so under option three, this, this is the op, this is the one option where. The, the, not only is the east-west traffic negatively impacted, but also the northbound and southbound traffic is also negatively impacted as well, right?
Yes, yep, correct.
So now, so that, that is the, uh, uh, as we look at these sort of three options. We have to take into account not only the, you know, how do the lanes line up and those types of issues and, but also. Um, sort of the impact on, on this, this dot, this chart here on. On, you know, westbound, eastbound, northbound, southbound, and option three is the only one that impacts negatively northbound and southbound, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Impacts negatively because it doesn't change what we have consistently now, north and south. I mean, it, it's what we have currently.
Correct, without, without any traffic added to the system.
Considering that traffic line, I already asked, asked a question earlier about having sensors and. Trying to timing that out based on the amount of traffic in either side of the road, north, south, east, west. Will that change the equation?
So I, I think if I understood your question correctly, is, is, is trying to. To come up with a, a timing plan based on the sensors and the pavement. And, and implementing that, um, at the intersection, is that correct?
Yes, kind of, that's one part of it, I would say more like a, a smart sensor which senses traffic. And how much, how long the traffic is backed up, something like that. Was similar to what you say, but smart, smart sensors.
Yeah, um. So that's a little outside of my area, Suresh. That, you know, that they're getting, there's been, I think we're on prior second or third generation of that technology, um, in the metro here. Um, the, the challenge becomes is in order to get that to work, I think, you, you gotta really still come back to. You know, having the, the, the correct geometry at, at the intersection. Um, we can squeeze a little bit of, of, um. Efficiencies out of it, um, the question that we would need to answer is can, can we solve the problem like that? My initial gut instincts tells me, um, I don't, I don't think we can, ju- just with the close proximity of the interstate. Um, and, and, and the types of peaks that we have here a little bit. Um, obviously with, with the pioneer traffic coming in and everything, but we just, we would need to dive into that more, so.
Um, Patrick, you've presented the three options in terms of, uh, traffic impact, site impact, et cetera. We, you've given us a little bit in terms of budget, in terms of the second option having. Uh, a cost implication of being between a hundred and fifty to a hundred and seventy-five thousand more dollars. For option two over option one.
Yes.
Um, but you haven't given us a general thought about the budget costs for three. Which I'm assuming would be the least expensive versus one versus two.
Yes, the three, since we would not be doing any sort of improvements over on the east leg. Um, there for those costs, that, that would be the cheapest alternative. Um, if we would go back, you know, I'll caveat that is, um, that we can get a mutual. Agreeable solution for the Bandit Britos and Jimmy Johns, if we need to shift this intersection south to be able to correct that offset at the intersection. Um. That, that would be, we, we just need to work through that, that real estate cost, those numbers I shared to you. Earlier, uh, uh, it did have some additional impacts over here on, on this side of the intersection. With, with the, um, additional impacts to the turn lanes and, and, and stuff. But it did not take into account any additional cost here with the Bandit Britos and Jimmy Johns. But one, one of the goals that, that we tried to do was. From the very onset of the project was, was make sure that we had a balanced approach on that west side of the intersection.
Yeah, and I appreciate what you, that you've showed the impacts to both of those properties, uh, their parking lots, how they would work. And we all know that that side of the intersection doesn't work well at all. So thank, I, 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 I think you did a great job presenting all of these options, thank you for that.
Patrick, I don't see an option.
Tom, I can very hear you.
The up, the trail. It runs on the north side there of Johnston Drive, it's in, it's in option two.
Yep.
Um, but it doesn't appear on, I mean, I don't think that impacts the, the beach tree, but, um, I just don't see it there. So that, I presume that would be an element of option three too, correct?
Yeah, we would need to figure out a path through there and, um. Um, to get it over, connected up, I, over to the inner urban trail, obviously, so.
I'm not sure who would be able to answer this question, uh, because it's kind of a crystal ball thing. But do any of the three options, um, impact the future development of the herd site? Any more than the others do?
We've met, um, with the LOL companies and have laid our alternatives out. Um, in front of them, um, primarily, well, we relayed our, our proposed design, also alternative number one out in front of them. Um. In, in my opinion, uh, what we're proposing. Uh, helps solve the traffic issue that is out here. So my opinion is I don't think it negatively impacts. How that parcel would develop, now, there is about, I believe it's about eight thousand square feet of property that we need. From them to be able to make this work. Um, so, but there, there's a big enough space there, I think, that remains. That it's, it's not like what we're dealing with over here in with Sonic and Jimmy Johns and Bandit Britos where they're kind of a postage stamp here. On kind of a, you know, a, a larger piece of property over here, so I think we have more flexibility, uh, over there. Um, and, and I'm sure, um, the LOL folks would, would say, hey, every square foot means something to us, which it does. Um, but I think we just got a little more flexibility over there.
Patrick, did I understand you to say the only option you've discussed with them is option one?
Correct, yes.
Okay. And John, or Councilman Temple, were you interested in knowing how the other two options would impact that property as well?
Yes, I just wondered if there's anything in picking one, two, or three. Would, would have more of an adverse effect on future development there than one of the other options.
I, I. If, if the decision, the go-forward decision tonight is, is, is do nothing on that east leg. One of our recommendations would be is make sure that we reserve right away to the north in the future. So that if a modification would need to be made, um, we would have room to be able to do it. Um, so, so on my. My opinion, I, I think the alter, our, our impacts would be the same on the LOL parcel, no matter what. Because if we don't take care of this today, I think we're going to be taking care of it in the future.
Other questions for Patrick on the options?
Option that you're showing on screen is option two, right?
Yes, this is option two currently up, yes.
Okay, can you expand that a little bit more on intersection? And what is the offset that you said bit going eastbound?
The eastbound offset is eleven foot, four inches, so, um, if you can see here. If I can draw this on here. If you see that red line there, it's a little bit off.
Right.
But from there over to here is, is a, the eleven foot, eleven foot four to get over.
Okay. Okay.
The thing with this alternative, it, it's just, it's really tight in between here, the, the back of curbs here. And so we're, we're just squeezing that and, and, and this parcel here. You know, the, the access and circulation in there, that's, it just gets to be really tight on that side.
Okay. I'm really struggling to see which options good. I really want to save those trees up there. But I'm struggling at this point, which one works best, I don't like that eleven feet, four inch. Offset up there, it's really hard for traffic flowing eastbound.
And Councilman Ready, I, I share, I, I, I share that concern. I, you know, I hadn't really focused in on it until tonight when the, um, you know, the aerial has been enlarged to the extent that it has. But I am very concerned about that through lane from the west going east, driving right into a turning lane. That concerns me.
Yes, it does, it really does. So one of the concerns I have is that the beach tree is old, do you guys know how old that tree is?
Well, I, I would guess that it was planted sometime when Heard Gardens started out there. I would just say, I don't know, fifty years, maybe.
Oh, it's, I think it's, i- i- as we look at option one. That the, the tree, the trees that would have to be removed, that have been kind of identified as significant trees is one tree. Um, that's the thirty-six to forty-two inch beach, and I, I'm looking at, and I, I don't know where we go to from this discussion if we're. There's a, there's a document in our packet that shows the.
Patrick, I thought you could bring it up.
Free inventory, yeah.
Are we ready to move on from just the specific discussion, yeah, I'm not sure either, um, Matt or Patrick?
We've, we've gone through the, the three different options, if we want to see how it impacts the tree, we can shift to this document and, and continue the.
Okay, why don't we, why don't we go there then, is everybody ready for that? Okay, let's, let's, let's go there.
So, um, this is the document that, uh, C H O pulled together here on, on just the trees. Um, now, obviously, the, the big concern here is, is with the beach and just kind of the relationship that sits. With the current back of curb and our proposed back curb with what we refer to as our preferred alternative. Um, so, uh, this tree here, we would need, I, I would caveat this is if we can get our grades. Kind of fine tune in here good enough that we don't have that big of an impact, you know, could we save this tree here? Um, it would be possible, my concern would be, is what would we be doing to the root zone? And are we going to cause damage to that, that the, the long-term viability of that, we would cause too much damage and the tree would die. You know, down the road several years after we would leave, but there's some smaller trees coming here to the east. Um. See here. Believe that's pine there. There's pines along here that we would need. There's maples here in in this location, and a lot of this is just to be able to get the trail through there.
Patrick, if you knew just, yeah, there you go. So I was, I hadn't really focused on this, but it appears that if you maybe zoom in just a little bit, there's a 24 to 30 inch Beech Tree that is in good condition that would, we believe, there's no, no, yeah, that one. There's no red X through that one. That one would be safe, correct?
Yeah, we're not, as part of our project, we would not impact that tree.
So obviously, we we almost assuredly are going to lose a 36 to 42 inch Beech Tree under option one. But we would be able to maintain, save a similarly quite large Beech Tree that's that's just to the east and a little bit north of there. And then if you scroll up, there's a whole row of Beech Trees that are, you know, kind of depends on how the development goes, and I want to be cautious not to over promise. But in that, if you, yeah, there's a, there's a clump of six Beech Trees there. One, which is as large as the one that's right on the road, right, right next to the road that was ruined. And so I think it's important as we kind of, you know, factor in, you know, what are the all the different elements to consider? There are several Beech Trees on this property that that are are have the potential to be safe. And 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 certainly, the one that's the 24 to 30 inch tree that's right in the yellow area there is is slight slated to be saved at this point. So I think this, I think that's an important, that to me, from my perspective, the thought process is an important factor, and just want to make sure people work that out.
So that part, the part that John made, sorry. Listen, excuse me. Downside about those Beech Trees around up there is that's a private property, right? And do we have any mandate on how those trees will maintain?
We don't. That would be worked out through either a development agreement or during the development of that property.
Okay. Then.
That's where we're working, I think, with the development agreement that is, I think, been in this packet or materials that Adam has circulated that focuses on trying to maintain some of those trees, a commitment from obviously the the current landowner and and trying then to make those continue to be, you know, understand that that this is an important issue, not only to the council, but also citizens of Johnston. And that they keep that in mind as they consider the development of the project. And obviously, as part of a development agreement, you're able to put a little bit more kind of commitment into that, as opposed to just a normal type of a development of a relationship you would have with a private landowner.
I agree. I think we should have some kind of a agreement with those landowners, too.
Was that development agreement in the packet? I guess I missed that somehow.
No, there wasn't a development agreement in the packet. I think that would just be worked out at that point in time, or Adam was trying to work through that as part of acquiring some of the right of way needed for this project.
Okay, I thought Tom was saying there was a draft circulating, but I probably just misheard that.
No, that's correct, John. This is Adam. Previously, at a council work session approximately two months ago, we circulated a term sheet for a potential development agreement on this site that discussed three of the kind of historic trees there closer to Merle Hay Road, and then lightly touched on these potential Beech Trees as well, but we've been waiting for the road intersection design to to wrap up prior to trying to finalize the terms of that development agreement.
So Adam, do you know what kind of construction will happen in this private property?
Presently, there is a 50 unit senior housing complex on the far southeast side of Heard Gardens that is expected to break ground this year. And there's a phase two to that project, the approximately another 40 some units directly to the west of that that's being contemplated. They would need to go through the Iowa Finance Authority program and be approved for tax credits for them to close on the property and propose to continue that development to the west. And then you can see the yellow outline for the potential north, south road. Exactly where the mouse is over, that development agreement would preserve to the east of that a small commercial pad. And then to the west of it, a commercial all the way north up to, what is it, 54th? With some additional restrictions on the types of commercial development that would be allowed there that are more in line with the gateway plan. So the only finalized development that we have at this point is Johnston Crossing, once Johnston Crossing one on the southeast side, but there's been several conversations in the last year about different commercial projects that could potentially occur on the west side of the property.
I really like that way Johnson is growing and a lot of things coming into the city. I really appreciate that. Ignite coming by and everything else. But also think that we should think of future about the climate, the increased traffic means more emission happening at those intersection. It means that if you're cutting down trees, where will those gas emissions go? It just goes into the atmosphere and it's just gets polluted. Trees actually absorb carbon dioxide and everything else. So you see my struggle here. I'm trying to see if I can preserve it without destroying any of those improve the city, but not destroying any of this natural growth.
One of the, one of the things that we could look at is like we did with Pioneer Parkway, if we need to, if if we're taking some trees out, can we look at replanting those somewhere else like we did with the Parkway? So that would be another option that we could do if if we had to take down the tree or if that option was chosen.
It's good alternative, but you can add a 50 year tree and a mature tree, right? It's a smaller tree there. Appreciate that thought. Understand that. Yeah. It's a hard struggle for me to make it. It's a hard struggle for me at this point.
Is there any more presentation then on the trees? Have we? Okay. Does the council have any more questions or comments about the tree presentation and the situation out there?
There is a quick question. I think I already know the answers to that. Can that Beech Tree be replanted? I mean, would? Is that a possibility?
I don't think John, John's here, but I don't think so.
I thought so.
To move a tree like that and be successful, I think you're talking about half a million dollars.
No, my, sorry, my bad.
We we did ask that question during our working group, and and that was kind of the decision that we came to was that we didn't believe it would be able to be relocated.
Okay.
Have any, any additional presentation on on the agenda for this evening? Okay. Before we see if there is anyone with us this evening that would like to make comments to the council, I just want to make sure that all of the questions or are for the request for information from the council, that the council has an opportunity for that. So is there any any further comments or questions from the council before we turn to public comment?
The only thing I would like to add is I had asked earlier if we'd had a arborist, the state arborist or somebody, look at that tree. And, you know, right now, a big portion of the tree, a third of it, maybe. The drip line is already impacted by the road. Which means the tree is already, you know, getting a little bit of stress. And I just wonder if if somebody, I know our own people have looked at it, but I don't know, I just thought it'd be nice to have, like the state arborist or somebody, drill the tree, make sure that it's perfectly healthy. That's the only comment I had.
We've had park staff take a look at the arborist on the park staff, but we have not gone to having the state arborist or bringing in a third party to take a look at that tree.
What has our arborist reported, Matt?
Arborist reported that the tree was was in good health and that it was good.
The life, the expected life of this tree would be, if it's 50 years old now, what what would we expect? Okay. Okay. Any other questions, comments, council, before we turn to public comment?
I just wanted to clarify, Mayor, this is supposed to be an action item for tonight?
The staff is looking for some guidance on which option they should pursue in terms of putting an RFP together and and I'll let you explain it, Matt. Go ahead.
Yes, Councilman Temple, we're looking for direction to move forward. We've had our first round of meetings with the property owners. We're looking to get a concept, an agreement on a concept so that we can go back out. Meet with the property owners for a second time as well as then start negotiations in the right of way acquisition if needed. So we're really looking for some direction on choosing that so that we can keep the project on schedule. McKnight has shared with us their desire to to open in June or July of 2022, so we just want to be able to maintain our schedule and and keep the project on track.
Bottom line is, the staff is looking for some consensus this evening on which option is the preferred option, so that you can take the next steps.
But if we're not able to reach consensus, we're still going to push to some sort of resolution. I mean, this, if we reach consensus tonight, I I I would be shocked, and I'm not, that's not a negative. It is just a hard issue. And so I I don't, I think setting consensus as a standard would be a real challenge.
A decision by the council, either by a majority vote or a consensus.
Yeah, I mean, I I think we need to, we need to, we need to to reach some decision, but I I think consensus will be really challenging. Based on the subcommittee discussion we've had on this, and that's not being critical of any member of the subcommittee. It's a hard issue.
I can remain hopeful. Maybe naive.
I I just, I just, it will be here a long time for consensus is the objective.
Okay, I guess I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump in here because I have not been a part of any of the committees or this, the work that's been done in the background. And I guess I just, if somebody could just bring me up to speed. On, I mean, is is this the only place where we can create this entrance into the Ignite property at this time? Have we exhausted looking at the Car Wash property or the Echo property? You know, I just I'm trying to figure out the urgency on this particular intersection. Because it seems to me we're going to be making it, no matter what decision we make, it's not going to be perfect. That bothers me.
Patrick, are you in the best position to bring us up to speed on how
I'm sorry.
roadway? No, 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 I and I I apologize that that you didn't have more background along the way, but Patrick or Matt?
Yeah, I'll I'll take a stab at it first, maybe. I was just looking at my my directories here, and I think we met just, you know, we we completed the traffic study in in November. So we kind of had the corridor sized up and we moved into design. And, you know, just just being conscious of COVID and impacts to businesses, I think, really at our first meeting. The 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 main focus was really, you know, we don't want to see these businesses leave Johnston. And so how can we be, you know, minimize the impacts and balance impacts as much as possible? And so that that was the the big first step. And so what we ended up doing was taking that concept then out to to the businesses, and we had one on one meetings with every businesses from here down to the interstate. And then we stretched to the north and even touched base with Child Serve. I was was just very appreciative on, I think, how workable and and how willing the businesses were. Really, the the toughest conversations were really with Poly Eyes and then and then dealing with Clark Properties up here, just from an access and a circulation standpoint. And how can we create a corridor in the future that people can safely ingress and egress their businesses? The Ignite project, I think, really benefits all of these properties around here from a, from a business perspective at the the intersection. I, you know, obviously minus the vet and the medical clinic and and stuff more to the south, but at the intersection where we have our biggest impacts. So that was really our first focus, and and we had that round of meetings, and and for the most part, I don't think we could really ask them to have gone much better. Great conversation. Everybody was even keeled, and and there was a good exchange of information back and forth. So then kind of moving in into our our next meeting. I believe early April, we we started hearing the concern with the Beech Tree. And and how could we come up with a solution, a different solution to be able to solve that? And that means, you know, in order to maintain that tree, we'd have to push our widening all to the south. And then what was the ramifications back there? We did take another look at the traffic study and and just kind of condensed that down into a memo. So so you don't get bored with all the technical aspects of what we look at, but just really try to provide that that one, 1.5 pager memo to to really condense the traffic study down in into that. As far as other locations on the corridor, where can we move this? It really becomes challenging. Ideally, you know, we like to have, again, from a coordination perspective up and down Merle Hay Road. We like to keep our intersection space fairly similar that will be signalized. It just helps with the progression of traffic. We try to avoid, you know, offset intersections as much as possible. That just, again, it it just causes issues from a timing perspective and getting the corridor to flow just from a, from a, an overall, you know, vehicle perspective there. On the closer we move access to the south, which we definitely want this to this access to come around and tie into Merle Hay Road to the south. Because what that does, that allows us to bleed off as many right turners and and kick them out and let them head back to the interstate. But to to have that full access there, then all of a sudden, we're down our signal spacing from the the Hy-Vee Fresh and Fast and the Audi dealership, that gets to be really tight. The further we move this up here to the north, then all of a sudden, it's it's fairly close to, obviously, Johnston Drive. So the spacing just becomes really problematic. Naturally, where it wants to fit is kind of where it was planned, you know, a number of years ago. And and seeing this area kind of redevelop, you know, at the time these businesses went in here. You know, I I don't think there is really any thoughts that, you know, that was low lying ground. It was cost prohibitive to do it, but obviously, the location for Ignite makes sense, given the proximity, the interstate, proximity to the metro and everything. So that's, that's the reason why, you know, it's it's a, we're looking through it at a different lens today than what we did a number of years ago. So as far as location, it's pretty, it's going to be pretty tough to be able to shift that north or south, in in our opinion.
Patrick, and don't we have some topography challenges if coming off the backside of Sonic or north of there as well?
Yeah, so the the other thing, you know, we worked quite a bit with Ignite to try to get their site to marry up from our our road profile that comes in here. And so the the challenge that we had, you know, that they were going to put in, I believe it was about a 12 foot tall retaining wall on the backside of Sonic here. But we couldn't get our roadway profile down fast enough to be able to tie in with the site. So they actually had to raise that portion So they actually had to raise that portion of the site up. So the building, uh, actually the 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 east side of the building will actually be a. Uh, a building wall slash retaining wall so that we can get the parking to kind of match a little closer to what's in Sonic, so. Um, ignite's been great to work with to to make those kind of adjustments. Um, and and again, all the businesses I think are really excited, um, because. Just knowing my, how much food my son ate when he visited a site like this to play hoops. Um, they they eat a lot of food, so um and it's it's a good, good location, so.
Thank you, Patrick, that helps a lot.
Other questions or comments before we go to public comment? Okay. So now we will turn to the public comment and I would just encourage those uh that are online with us that are attending the meeting virtually, that if you would like to speak. Please indicate that you would like to speak by raising, do they have a hand raise? By raising your hand and we will take you in the order that you indicate that you would like to speak. But we will first go to people in the audience that are that are here in person. Um, I would ask all of you, when you speak, to state your name and your address. Um, please limit your comments to uh three minutes or less. And if you are online with us, we do want to see you so that we can interact with you. So we would ask that you turn your camera on when you are addressing the council. So with that, we'll turn first to the uh. The audience that is with us in person. Is there anyone here in the audience that would like to address the council?
Steve, my name is Adam Harm, I address six seven two four Northwest Forty Eighth Court.
It's kind of tough to hear that.
Yeah, he's.
There we go. Is this better, Patrick?
Patrick.
Yes, that's better, yes.
Okay.
I'll restart. My name is Adam Harm, I address six seven two four Northwest Forty Eighth Court. Um, I had a couple of questions. I don't know if it's best to address to the council or directly to Patrick, but regarding the traffic study underlying. The possible need for the left hand turns. The first issue or question, uh. The numbers laid out in the memo. Um, indicate that those are for the PM peak hour. Uh, that intersection, especially for that uh westbound left turn movement. It would seem that the AM peak hour would be of greater concern than the PM peak hour traffic counts. Second question regarding. That study, um. In the difference between twenty twenty one and twenty forty six. In the eastbound um right turn and the northbound left turn. Numbers, we see a decrease from twenty one, twenty twenty one to twenty forty six. For those uh travelers south or sourced uh to and from the south. Is there a, is that an artifact of the model or is there a? A reason for that expectation in the decrease in traffic? Over the twenty five years?
I believe at that point in time, sir, the uh additional lane to the south will be open. And so we are siphoning more vehicles off to the south. Um, let me pull up the drawing here. At that point in time, this connection would be made to Merle Hay Road. So that we 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 redistribute the traffic how flows out of this site.
Okay, so that assumption is built into the model, so.
Yes.
Generate those numbers, okay. Um, and the final question regarding the the impact to the westbound through and westbound uh right turning traffic. Um, I do understand that. Uh, the baseline twenty forty six, no left turn lane has impacts for all directions. But it seems that the the impact on. Adding the left turn lane in the twenty forty six scenario for those right hand turners, which is a larger. Growth segment of traffic in that intersection than the. The left turn um or other segments, um. It seems that that negatively impacting that movement. Um, at the trade off for the others. Uh, seems unwaisted. In terms of that balancing act. And those are the comments I have regarding that. Thank you.
Patrick, can you respond to the? Other two questions?
Yeah, on that last question, it it really has to, that that. Again, how the model set up. Is if you look at the 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 minimal growth in that through movement. And the additional uh growth in really the right turn movement. Uh, again, to solve this, we would, we would. Probably add a right turn lane, but because these numbers here are so small. Um, we would not recommend that, and we've debated that internally to our office kind of back and forth. You know, should we reserve that in the future in case something's different? And we kind of fall back to is is the rest of the network that will be built out in in the corridor. Uh, or in the city, um primarily sixty second Avenue. Um, by that time would would be uh probably reconstructed all the way over to Northwest Beaver Drive. Or Beaver Drive, so um we did debate that, um, and and, you know. I go back to this, it it it's really looking at not any single movement at the intersection. When we try to balance it and do that gut check, but it's the overall balance of the whole intersection. And in this case, that that movement does suffer a little bit and we acknowledge that.
Patrick, there was a, yeah, there was a first question.
Yeah, I can barely hear that.
Um, the initial question uh regarding the use of the PM peak hour traffic counts as opposed to the AM peak hour.
Yes. Yes, so the the traffic counts, uh, again. Um, it it's based based on count data. And so um and I don't have any information here in front of me and I'm just not up to to speed on all the details here. But uh, but based on what our traffic engineers did look at, the the PM peak hour was more problematic than what the AM peak hour in this situation. Uh, we can, we can go ahead and ver- uh validate that, but I'm pretty confident that that that's why why they looked at it, so.
Oh, do we have folks on the line? No one has indicated that they would like to speak. Okay. Well, counsel, I think we're at the point then that we uh can have some discussion and and uh make a decision.
Uh, if you wouldn't mind, Mayor, I could start off.
Sure.
I appreciate all the work everyone has put into this, and I appreciate the extra meeting that we're having here today.
Rhonda, you're pretty faint.
How's that?
Better, much better.
Okay, I appreciate all the work everyone has put together for this meeting. I appreciate the. Extra special council meeting over this subject. Um, I know it's been a a kind of a late day for everybody and I I really. It just shows how much our our council and our staff all. All are concerned about doing the best for our. City, so I just want to state that I really appreciate that we're having this discussion. I have been involved in these uh meetings about this issue. Um, for the last few months and it wasn't until like um Patrick has said, it wasn't until April that we got down to the nitty gritty. And it was at that time that I started um. Being concerned about the loss of this beach tree. And I don't want people to think that it's all about one tree. It's not about one tree. It's about a character, an image, it's about making choices for our city. And um. I've been on the city council now about three and a half years and I voted for many developments and these developments take down trees. And I've been supportive of those developments. They were thoughtful, we did the best we could. I think we can do better and I know that we are discussing better ways to protect our uh community trees. Uh, enforcing our ordinances, providing incentives for developments to 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 keep the trees that are on them. Because frankly, I think everybody really does realize this, that existing trees are a much better tree to have than to plant new ones. Because an existing tree takes out, as Shresh um Councilman ready already talked, pollutants. Um, they uh provide habitat for our birds, our native bees. Um, they uh produce oxygen, they take in carbon dioxide. Um, people feel healthier healthier around trees. They make them, people feel happier around trees. There are studies, numerous studies about uh strip malls, et cetera, that have trees. And do better, um, that people are more attracted to those places. And if you're in a parking lot and there's a big shade tree and it's a hot day, you're plant, you're gonna plant your. Car under that tree, so there's a lot of reasons why we save trees. And there's also other reasons why we make decisions. Um, that we have to stand by in terms of development. This tree that we're talking about, it's been there for a long time. And the things that happen to trees, new trees, if we plant new trees. Um, you've got to water them, you've got to maintain them. As we've already talked about many times, there's a huge infrastructure that's underground along our uh streets and easements. There's water lines, gas lines, electric lines, fiber optic lines, et cetera. And then in the very end, we're supposed to shoehorn in trees and then we're gonna take care of those trees and most urban trees don't last longer than twelve to fifteen years. In fact, I got on the school, um, I ran for city council. Um, because of trees and one specific tree. Was a beautiful sugar maple in front of cactus bobs. And uh I will use, a lot of you guys know that I used to be a contractor for Bob Linslandscaping. And we actually planted those trees at that strip mall, which is Cactus Bob. Uh, back in the two thousands. And one of them was a sugar maple and it grew on to be a very beautiful tree. And then in twenty sixteen, I drove by up. Merle Hay Road one day and all those trees were gone. They had gotten to be about mm twenty feet tall and probably about fifteen feet wide. And they were all gone. Well, Fairway was being built at that time, which is kind of next door to the north. And um I thought, well, that must have been a utility project. It came through and they had to take down those trees. Well, I sent a note to the city staff, I don't know if David remembers this. And I said, why are those trees are gone? And uh they came back and said, well, there isn't a utility project. We don't know why those trees are gone. So then they contacted the homeowner or the development owner and he just cut them down. Blocking the view of the signs. And at first we weren't gonna, we, the city wasn't gonna push him on putting them back, but then they did. They pushed him and told him those were part of the uh zoning requirements to have trees, so we got new trees now. And now we're starting over again with the clock until we get a nice mature tree that starts taking up carbon dioxide and producing oxygen and all the other things. That we need. And so. I'm on the council because I'm gonna work for the trees. I'm gonna work for the trees and um I've heard from a lot of people. A lot of people have contacted me about. Tree removals across the city. And a lot of those tree removals, you know, we know the ins and outs of it. We know that our in our engineers tried very hard to save a lot of those trees. They did. But in this case, I'm gonna work really hard for this tree. I heard everything Patrick had to say about traffic studies. A hundred percent, I've heard him. But there's come to time when you have to make a choice. And the choice comes down to what do you value in your city and what is the character of your city? And I think it's a mistake not to. Push all that we can to save as much of our landscape as possible. Where you want to look different than Ankeny. We don't want to look like Clive. We don't want to look like West Des Moines. I think we want to look like Johnston. And we are a smaller town, but we still have a center. We still have a main street. I believe that Merle Hay Road can be amazing. But we need to take care of it. We need may, need to make it pleasant. And I think that the people walking and biking and our landscape that is existing deserves to be. Giving precedent over another lane of pavement. So. Like I said. It may seem unreasonable that I'm digging in my heels on this issue. But it starts here. I think this tree could may be amazing. I visualize this new development that's gonna happen on that corner. As a really fun coffee shop with outside tables and chairs under those beautiful trees. That's what I hope for it. So that's where I'm at. I'm for option three. Thanks.
Um, I guess I'll go next as the other member of the committee. So I I I I think um I have a lot of respect for what Councilwoman Ro- uh Councilwoman Martin said. And um and I I think it's very well thought out and and passionate and 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 I respect that about her and I also respect that I think. She's as committed to every, anybody else up here or that's part of the council and to try to find consensus on this issue, so. Um, our, whatever issue we're working on and and I, you know, we were at the pushing in the fire truck thing the other day and we were both talking to the new assistant fire chief about how much. We work really hard to to build consensus. And and to work together as a team and and so. Um, you know, I I know we're all committed to that. I I unfortunately, you know, on on this issue, I think, you know, it's. There's so many factors that that go into this. Um, that from my perspective, uh uh option one is is really the. The only option and and here's, I mean, to me, I think if you look at the data. I think it's 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 obvious that there's a need for two turn lanes. Um, and and if you go back to the traffic study data that was shown to us, if you don't have the two turn lanes, you start to impact. Eventually, the, not just the eastbound and the westbound at Merle Hay, but also the north and the south. Bound and um, you know, we, as you know, I hear from a lot of citizens in our community. Who are, and and whenever we do our community study, almost assuredly, the number one issue that they identify is traffic flow. And if we don't, if we re- resolve to choose a solution that is going to. Um, cause issues in all four directions at that intersection, I think we've really made a a a a bad decision. And even as as Patrick sort of pointed out, that he believes that if we would choose options three, we would, we really, we will, we need to reserve that. Uh, right away from uh uh. Her gardens because we're gonna need that land eventually and so. Um, for me, it's it's obvious that we have to choose either between option one or two because we need the two left turn lanes. Um, and then and then you look at, okay, which between option one or option two and there's really. Uh, I think it's very clear that option two is very problematic. You know, the eastbound lane shift of almost twelve feet is a significant safety risk as several members of the council have identified. It's 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 a, it's a. Um, it's a not, it's it's a bad decision matrix. Um, and so we shouldn't, that's that's very significant concern to me, the higher cost with the retaining wall. Uh, as as compared to option one and and the, uh, those are the two reasons really that I have concerns with option two. So I think it comes down to, uh, you know, okay, if we if we choose between, uh, if we choose option one, then obviously. Then that means we will lose this beach tree and 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 I understand the passion and the belief in that that tree. But I think we have to look at this from a a larger perspective is that there are several other beach trees on this property that per- could potentially be. Um, uh, salvaged and 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 become that focal point of a coffee shop. The tree that's just to the, to the east and to the north is is and I and I agree with what Councilman Evan said, I I can't, I'm sort of, you know, this, this current tree is so close to the road. That it it's it's, it it's some point that's gotta have a negative impact on it. Um, and that other tree, which is 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 is, you know, in a good spot and not gonna be negatively impacted, plus the other beast trees on the on the on the route. I think can be salvaged. And second of all, I really think, and I, we've heard from a lot of citizens who are sort of, who are concerned about tree removal in our city and and I. I talked, I've talked about this at the last couple of council meetings that. I think we really need to identify some of the really positive things we've done, whether it be or. Are all this, all the work we have done on stormwater to help maintain. Um, the the stormwater drainage ways that that run through our community and by preventing by these ma- significant erosion control efforts we put in. Which is probably the number one maintainer of mature trees in this city. And my, I can go out on my back deck, this happened about a month ago. Um, my back deck, there's a, it's a massive, probably a cottonwood tree, sixty foot tall. And it's bald eagle, this massive bald eagle had captured a fish. From the retaining pond across eighty six street. And it flew up into this cottonwood. And I texted my son who was in the basis, you gotta come up here, you gotta come up here. And this. And this fish sat up in this massive tree that's right, I can see it right from my back deck and ate this fish. And it caused this amazing amount of commotion. Crows were flying around, squawking at it. It was, and my son came up and we really, it was a great moment. And that's, and that's a tree that is there, and I know it's going to be there because we have implemented that stormwater utility fee, which is helping manage erosion control along these drainage dishes. So that's one example. I think the Pioneer Parkway Trail, which we've weaved through several mature trees, the construction here at City Hall, in which we worked really hard and Councilwoman Martin really led the charge to make sure that some important trees on this property have been maintained. So I think as a city, we've worked really hard to do that. Are we perfect? Absolutely not. And, but I just don't see any other way that we can maintain this particular tree. And that's why I support option one.
Councilman Evans or Councilman Ready or Temple?
Well, I guess I'm going to, I'm going to come in from a, I'm going to take the tree thing totally off the table. And for me, it's more of a safety issue. I have a big problem with this lane shift stuff. There's two places that currently exist in the city where I pull up to an intersection and it looks like I'm supposed to go straight, but then the traffic comes in the other direction. It looks like they're supposed to go straight, but then they're actually turning. And then there's some confusion. And then the fingers start flying when the light turns green. And it just, it, I really am concerned about the lane shift issue. And so for me, as I look at the options on that, I think, Patrick, you pointed out that the, we would have the worst lane shift with option three. Is that correct? Eleven and a half feet or something?
Yes. And in order to mitigate that, we would have to shift the west leg to the south.
Yep. And then the option two, the eastbound traffic, that lane shift going east is horrible. And like Sir Est said, on a dark night, pouring rain, you come out of there after you've just, you know, sat through four soccer games and you're shot. And, I mean, it's, it's, it's a problem. So I guess I'm, for myself, for the safety reasons, I'm going to support option one. I have went over and parked my car and looked at that tree, looked at the drip line, looked at the, the road that's already on top of the root system that's underneath it. There's a utility box that's very, very close to it. I don't know what's in that utility box, but to me, that there's already, as much as, I'm also a landscape architect. I'm also a huge fan of trees. I mean, anybody driving past my house knows that I'm a tree freak. But in this situation, I'm going to take safety over the tree. And I'm going to support option one.
Councilman Evans, I will just point out that in option three, if Patrick had shown the setback for the Jimmy John's side of the roadway at a 12-foot setback instead of the 20 as shown, the alignment of the lanes would be almost perfect.
Well, that makes a huge difference.
The, you know, as Patrick said, he doesn't know whether Jimmy, the Jimmy John's owners will accept a 12-foot setback. That's a negotiation, but he could get it to the point where those lanes do line up.
Yeah, I think the, the challenge, I think, with option three is whether you're willing to accept the impact as shown in the traffic study of only having one left turn lane. And if you're willing to accept that, then, then, then the other issues sort of, you can probably figure out, the other issues are probably all about the same under either option, but it's the issue of under option three, you only have that one southbound left turn lane and acknowledging the impact that that will have on this intersection.
The ultimate result, that intersection will not function the way we want it to function, either in the short term or the long term. Ready or Councilman Temple?
I'll go. I agree with what Councilwoman Rhonda Martin said, and I also agree with what Councilperson Tom Kope said about all those things. And all this, we are a city that's really had a good run with a lot of trees. And we have been declared tree cities for several years. I really am proud of those facts. We also seen the city grow quite a bit. I've been in the city for over 17 years and I've seen the city grow tremendously. When I first came in, I was the only house in that neighborhood. And there's so many now, I can't see anything else anywhere. That's totally covered with houses and everything else. I like that city's grown a lot and it's grown quite a bit. But I also like to see the commercial development happen and that's really good. That brings a lot of tax dollars into the city and everything else. But also alluded to this fact earlier in this, that yes, we need to grow, but at what cost? Do we think cutting down trees will help us grow? Maybe I agree, but it also means that cutting down trees means that, you know, having more traffic and that ways more pollution, emissions, gas emissions. And where does that go? There's no tree to absorb it. It's just hanging up there and all it possibly be using it as, right? So that's, that's the concern with what's happening with the climate here and this April being a climate month, I think we should also consider that fact as well. But we are only trying to take down one tree and that gives me a pause as well to see did you take that short-term gain, long-term loss? Look at short-term loss and long-term gain. I'm struggling at this point in time to say which option looks good. And option two is not something I could agree at all because of that 11-foot, 4-inch shift between west to east. That's totally dangerous. So first and second could be a nice option. And also thinking of future traffic growth and everything else, the left lane going from east to south, single thing that could be a problem too. And that's why I'm excited to see if there's a way to make that traffic light bit smarter on those things. Can that be done? I haven't got a right answer to it yet. So maybe that's something we should probably look at, the smart sensors, which actually looks at traffic, how much traffic is at any particular point in time and turns the traffic lights, but not southeast flash. That could be an option to look at too, instead of cutting down the tree. If, I mean, if that is not a possibility, even if the traffic makes a lot, doesn't make that sense because of that traffic from interstate, it might block, a lot more things might happen. If that's the case, I'd like to go with option one. I don't like option three, but as Councilperson Jim Evans said, safety is also a concern. And we have, when we have the Ignite project coming up, there's a lot more traffic. And that certainly will believe that more pedestrians will be crossing across. And I think that might be a cause of concern for everybody. It's a struggle for me to say which one to go right. And I'm certainly moving more towards option one than option three. A lot of people have contacted me saying that save that tree, but I also need to think about a bigger picture. Look at the, how the city will look at this and how it'll handle. Should I go short-term gain, long-term loss? Short-term loss, long-term gain? At this point, I'm, I'm leaning towards option one. And I apologize to all those people who called me up and said, save this tree and all this thing. I really apologize, but this is a, a, a bigger, bigger picture that we need to look at. And I'm really a climate guy. I grow a lot of trees in my house, shooting my house as well. I like that. I'm in the garden all the time. But look at a bigger perspective, a bigger picture. I think option one could be a nicer way to look at it. Thank you guys for listening to me.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Temple, do you want to weigh in?
Yeah, I'll make a few comments. I think a lot of good points have been made on both sides of this tonight. And I appreciate, as others have said, how, how much thought we've given to these issues. It shows, I think that Johnston elected officials are trying to do the right thing by the community and looking at, at our long-term needs and what best suits this, this city. To me, I guess I'd come down on the side of option one, just for a couple of reasons, and they mainly relate to safety and practicality of the build-out. Option two, I don't really like, I definitely don't like that offset traffic. As Councilman Evans said, there's a couple of places in town where I get nervous when I'm about to make a left turn and it looks like the other people that are supposed to make a left turn are coming straight at me. So I really don't like that offset. And I'm also not comfortable with, on the west side of the intersection, pushing everything to the south and just really squeezing that Jimmy John's Bandit Burrito site. And that's the issue I have with option three as well, is that we have to put that squeeze in there. And I just, I'm not sure that's really functional. I'm not sure the property owner would agree to it. And then further on three, is we lose the second left turn lane, which I think long-term is something we need. So it's, it's painful to say we have to lose that beech tree in option one, but I just think option one is the best way to go.
Thank you. Let me make just a couple of comments.
Sorry, if I may add one more thing before you add.
Okay, go ahead, Councilman.
I was going to say that we talked about the traffic lights. Can you, Patrick, look at those traffic smart signals? And that might be help us all in the future. Appreciate that. Thank you, May. I appreciate, I'm sorry, interrupted you.
Not a problem, not a problem. I'll make just a couple of quick comments because I don't want to just repeat what's already been said because I think a lot of good comments have been made. And I don't know that we need to spend much more time on this this evening, but a lot of good discussion, a lot of good information, thanks to the staff, thanks to the council members and, and our public who have weighed in on this issue and provided a lot of good information and things for us to consider. Councilwoman Martin, just as passionately as you feel about trees, I feel passionately about the safety of the residents and visitors in this community. And when I consider what's being proposed here in terms of the right inner, construction of the intersection, you know, I am persuaded that option one is the only option that is safe for vehicular traffic, safe for pedestrian traffic and, and further development in the area. If it's not safe, if we don't, if we don't construct it in a way that it is safe for both pedestrian, and I'm, I'm including in that, not just people who are walking, but also people who are biking or, or using some other means of transportation other than vehicles. If it's not safe for everyone that interacts with that intersection, we are not going to see the kind of development in this area that we are all hoping we will see and have worked so hard on for, for over a decade now. I mean, if people aren't, if people don't feel like they're safe there, they're just not going, we're not going to get development there and we're not going to have people come there. So we need to, we need, we need to get this intersection right. And, you know, we've heard it tonight, there's no perfect, there's no, there, there isn't a perfect design here. If we, you know, I've scorched earth, if we were to start over, we wouldn't have any misalignment here. You know, those Jimmy Johns and Evan and Burrito wouldn't have been built exactly where they're, where they've been built. But we couldn't foresee, you know, the kind of development that we're, we're going to see down where the Ignite is, is being constructed and, and some additional city park area there. So we, we just didn't look that far enough into the future and, and get it right when it was, when those establishments were being put in there. So I think, and I agree with you, Councilwoman Martin, I think there is great opportunity on Merle Hay Road. You know, we've talked some about doing a streetscaping project from, from the south end clear up to the town center. I, I, I'm hoping we can do that sooner rather than later. And that will present opportunity for, for planting of more trees, not just in front of Cactus Bob's, but all the way up the street. So, you know, I'd like to work with you on that because I'm, I'm anxious to, to see some of that thinking start as we are, as we are developing the town center as well as this, this south end. So those are my thoughts. And, you know, Councilman Kope, you said it, there's, this, this has not been easy. But we need to, we need to move forward. So I think we need to, need to make a decision tonight. And are we ready for a motion?
Before we make that motion, can I, I can see the way the wind's blowing here and I understand what's going to happen here. So what I would like to ask as part of our motion, if we're, if we're going to make a motion of which option to go ahead, and I don't believe the number three is going to get it, I would like to add to that motion that says that we asked our engineers to do what they can to designate areas where street trees can be planted in these easements. That in the discussions with the business owners that you, that they explain that we're, our intention is that this, this redesign of this intersection will include designated locations for trees and that they be included in the construction pricing and installation.
And I guess I would like to add something. In aligning that bike path or bike trail through there, if we can minimize, do whatever we have to do to save as many of those trees in there as we can, make the curves or the swoops. I mean, people love swoops and curves in their sidewalks. They don't, a runway sidewalk is not the greatest thing, but I would like to stress that as well.
Yeah, and I would just add, since we, we have talked about some of these trees specifically in the, and maybe, I don't know if you can pull up the doc, the Merle Hay Road and Johnson Tree Right-Away Tree Exhibit? Cindy, are you able to do that?
Patrick, can you pull up the Merle Hay easements that we need with the trees on it as well? There you go. Thank you.
And maybe, and zoom in, especially to the trees that are on the corner there. I think there's, there's certainly, actually, yeah, so you've got the, you've got the Japanese katsura tree, which I think there's a strong effort to try to save that. I know that, I don't know if it's this large oak that's in the far corner that Councilwoman Martin has identified as something that's a real priority. And then you have the shingle oak up, go, go to the north a little bit. And the shingle oak and the bald cypress. And those, those aren't impacted by the bike trail, but would be impacted by potential development. Those are all trees that we've talked about trying to work with the developer to maintain. And then as many of these beech trees are, so there's about a half dozen beech trees that are similar in variety to the beech tree that we would lose. There's, there's six there in a row, and then there's another one that's closer to Johnston Dry that we talked about earlier. So those are the ones that we're trying to, and I know this doesn't specifically answer your question, Councilman Evans, but it, but just as we've talked and, and with Adam about his communications with the developer about how do we, you know, try to about how do we, you know, try to accomplish the objectives that we've heard from our citizens about the interest in trying to protect as many trees on this property, given this, this property's history as a, as a nursery and kind of the unique elements of it. So, and I would, and if others would add, want to add something. But that's been kind of what we, those are the trees that we've really tried to protect. And then, you know, other trees that maybe aren't as sort of significant, that those, we, you know, then we'd probably be a little bit flexible on those, so.
Was that a motion?
Yeah, turn your.
I mean, I get, I'll make a motion to approve option one. And do I need to do anything more than that? Or is that, because we don't really have an agenda item or a resolution or a number, right? Okay. Okay. So I make a motion to approve option one as it relates to the intersection of Merle Hay and Johnson Drive.
I'll second.
And does that motion, does that motion include the other, the comments of, of Councilman Evans and Martin?
Yes, I will include that.
I still second.
We have a motion and a second. Cindy, vote please.
Can't hear you, Cindy.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
No.
Ready?
Yes.
Temple?
Yes.
Kope?
Yes.
Motion passed. That was the only agenda item we had this evening. Is there anything else for the good of the order?
I would just acknowledge that this, I think Councilman Ready did a really good job of explaining, you know, this was a challenging decision. And I think, and you know, these are, you know, these come along every so often. And this, this was a very challenging decision for all of us. And, but I think we did it, we handled it in as about as a responsible way as we could. And so that's, that's certainly a positive feeling, so.
Yeah, and I would definitely thank, thank the mayor for offering this special meeting to have this discussion. Thank you for that. And thank you to staff for this extra meeting. I appreciate it.
This is the toughest decision we've had to make so far in this chamber.
I was gonna ask what happened to the wall there?
Well, it's made its way around.
I would like to, I would like to take this time and thank the mayor and the council. I know this has been a tough decision, but I do appreciate all the early morning meetings and the time to have the thoughtful discussion on, on this project. So I really appreciate your guys' time and effort in this.
Thanks all, and we are adjourned.
Thank you, guys. Have a good evening.
Good night.